Get this right. 1-4-0-8, 4-1-8, 9-3-8-8. And the password is on the website because it's really difficult to read. Or by clicking on the following website address, sau53.org and then click on the Remote School Board Meetings link. We're also providing public notice to the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using WebEx or via telephone. Instructions have also been provided on the website of sau53.org, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please email Sandy. That's S-V-A-L-I-N-E at sau53.org. And adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law.
Jean Gaus, I'm alone.
Thank you. Ann?
Amy? I can't hear you, Amy.
Amy, I'm not sure if you're muted or if something else is up, but I can't hear you.
Her mute button is not on.
I'll skip for a second. April?
Present, alone.
Thank you.
Andy, just to let you know, there's no sound, there's no microphone next to Amy's name, which makes me think she doesn't have audio turned on. So if she can hear us, I think she needs to turn on her audio.
Andy is present and alone. And I'm going to drop a message to Amy in the chat. Patty, do you see the message?
Oh, okay.
Okay, Amy. Hopefully, baby?
I heard something. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, sorry. So because my computer audio has been spotty, I just thought it would be safer to call in by phone. So if you just want to, you know, unmute this line when I need to speak, that would be fantastic. I am present, Amy Manzelli, and I am alone.
Thank you all.
As long as there's no background noise, Amy, I will leave you unmuted to make it easier for you. If I start hearing noise, I'll mute you.
Thanks. All right, so agenda item number two, minutes of previous meetings. I think we can probably take the first two together and then the last bunch together if there's, if people are prepared and there's a motion.
This is April, and I actually make a motion that we, I would like to make a motion that we accept February 10th, mostly for the point of discussion. There are corrections for these minutes, and I think it would not be prudent to take February 10th and March 3rd together.
To accept the minutes from February 10th?
This is Ann. I second.
Thank you. April, you suggest some discussion?
Uh, yes. So I reviewed these minutes, and first thing, there, we had a non-public session. There are no non-public minutes. Also, I arrived late to this meeting, and I was not in attendance during the vote on the minutes. So you can see that it says that all in favor, the motion carried. I arrived around 6:40. I did not vote on that, so that's actually incorrect. I arrived when Jim Garvin was addressing the board. Um, so I do, I also don't believe I was there during 3C Gibson donation where it says all in favor. I was also absent during that portion. And that's not what the minutes reflect. And if we go on to just some clarification, you and Jean were there, so I just want to bounce this off of you guys. I reviewed my notes on page two under social emotional learning. It says, put this on the March's agenda. Youth Risk Behavior Survey is typically done later in the year. According to my notes, I had that that comes back in April slash May. And I think that would be helpful for preservation, or if we need to look back, that it specifies when. Um, the other thing, if I go up on page two under F Communication, the last paragraph, it says the person we have used in the past, we actually discussed that person's name was brought up. And I think it would be prudent for people who weren't there to know who that was, because this is the record of our meeting. So if the one, if, if anyone even one of our new board members wanted to know who that was, should I continue?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, I am, also, I'm on page three now, 3G Program of Studies. Um, so there's a discussion of, and I'm not sure how much detail we want in here, but, but in the notes, reflect what the reduction in credits are. But I didn't think the specifics what, that the reduction is life studies minus 7.5 and the elective minus 2.5. And if we go on down, um, page six of the program studies, Alternative Diploma. The minutes reflect special education students should receive more than a certificate of attendance. That is not the correct verbiage. The correct verbiage is students with significant cognitive abilities. There was also no notation of what I brought up, that the New Hampshire DOE and the New Hampshire School Board Association also recommend a policy, the Alternative Diploma policy. Um, I also did not see in these, actually, I made a correction. I did see that on a later page. Um, going to page four. This is something I didn't know prior to coming on the board. Um, under, it's more than halfway down, there's credits versus courses. And so there was a, a conversation about a Carnegie unit is one course credit per year. And that five PA credits equals one course per year, so a Carnegie unit. And how the state minimum is 20 units or 100 credits. Um, continuing to go down, last paragraph. The third sentence before the end, it talks about summer school is an option for recovering credits. That is not all that was told to us. We were told that either summer school or the next semester is an option for recovering credits, and the next semester is not noted in these minutes. Um, going to page five on 4B. Um, so I reviewed our minutes. If someone's representing an organization, it should be notated what organization they're representing. And so there is, under 4B, it talks about Mr. Garvin, Ms. Fowler, and Mr. Batch Helder coming to speak to us. And I wasn't really sure if they were speaking on behalf of the Pembroke Grange or as individual community members. That's not recorded in here. Um, and it, their, their public comments are kind of clumped together with no attribution to who really made those comments. Um, the other thing in discussing the Grange, I did not see a notation that Mr. Coughlin advised the board that the roof is okay and that the ceiling had collapsed within the last month. Um, also going to 4C, SAU Board, SAU Executive Meetings, we were told that the February meeting was canceled. That's not reflected in the minutes. Um, also going on down to Board Reports, New Hampshire School Board Associate, this is 4C. At this meeting, there was distributed a, a booklet that was provided by the New England Secretary Secondary Schools Consortium. And that is something that I did bring back and I shared with all board members, and I don't see that reflected in the minutes. Um, let's see. And, and so those are the things I had noted in the minutes, how I saw how those could be updated.
Okay, so, um, I guess I would say I think the, if I remember right, the thing that you brought back to us was paper, right? There wasn't?
Yes, it was, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So I, I'm looking at the RSA for Right to Know stuff right now. And while we certainly would want to strive to give all the information that we can, um, the minutes, the requirements for minutes for a public meeting are the names, one, the names of the members present, two, other people participating, and it is not necessary to list everyone present. Three, a brief summary of subject matter discussed. And four, any final decision reached or action taken. So I don't have personally a problem with anything that you just said. Um, but I personally would be prepared to vote on these minutes tonight because much of the detail that you're requesting is not required, and these minutes are now, what, four months old?
If I may, again, I was not in attendance until 6:40. These minutes are incorrect, saying it does not note that I was absent. It says all in favor. We cannot be all in favor if I was not present. That reflects-
I'm not sure if there's anybody here that can clarify, but if I am at a meeting and all of the people that are there to vote, vote in favor of something, I would say that's all in favor. Um, all of the people in the room that are able to vote are in favor of the motion. That's only my opinion. I don't know if there's, if that language is actually defined somewhere. But again, and I'm not trying to change your mind, April, I'm just saying I am prepared to vote on these minutes tonight.
I am requesting, I would like to request that they be amended to accurately reflect what happened in the meeting and accurately reflect the language specifically regarding the students with significant cognitive abilities. The Alternative Diploma that was brought up, I think it's important that we use the correct language. It's not something that's available to special ed students. It's very specific to students with cognitive, significant cognitive disabilities.
So Jean, did you have anything you wanted to add before we move to question?
Actually, I had a comment. This is Amy.
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, I think that it would be helpful to just amend the minutes and then we can make a motion to approve them as amended to make sure it reflects the time that April arrived. I do think that that, um, it's not the issue that you're mentioning, Andy, which is potentially getting into too much detail. I agree with that point, but I agree with April's point that it's incorrect that the minutes can be read to have her present at a meeting at a time when she wasn't present. Um, I actually attended that meeting. I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was studying up and learning, and I recall those details that she's talking about, but I don't think that they need to be in the minutes, except as I mentioned, perhaps making that one addition for the change of time.
Uh, Jeter, Ann?
I have, um, just my notation as far as the Alternative Diplomas goes, for the New Hampshire Department of Education, Alternative Diplomas are available for IEPs. Did not, I don't recall but anything said about cognitive disabilities. My own, my note says IEP only.
Thanks. Ann, did you want to chime in on any of this before we?
Yeah, my thought was, um, when I'm attending meetings and we go, like, we go over our minutes, um, we make a motion to approve the minutes, and then once we make the corrections, we make a motion to amend the minutes as, as corrected. So I think that's what we could do here.
So you're saying at the town, sometimes you would accept the minutes and then April could submit the changes that she's asking for to Sandy? And once they've been fixed up, we could look at them to get in vote to accept the amendments?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, it wasn't clear. Um, we accept, we make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. We go through the corrections, and then the motion is to accept the minutes as amended. So that's what we could do this evening. If it's something that's lengthy, maybe she could mail them to Sandy?
That's typically what we have done with the minutes, too. You know, we'll make corrections and then approve as amended.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, um, the current motion on the floor is to approve the minutes from February 10th, and the motion was seconded. Uh, so I will take a roll call vote.
Andy, this is April. I would like to amend my motion um, to be that I make a motion that we amend the minutes.
A second for that amendment?
A second. This is Ann.
Thank you. So we need to take a roll call vote on just amending the language of the, of the motion first. So we're going to take a roll call vote to amend the motion from approving the February 10 minutes to amending the February 10 minutes. Um, Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
So the motion carries, so the language has been amended. So now we will vote on actually amending the February 10 minutes on another roll call vote. Uh, Ann?
Excuse me, sorry, Andy.
Sure.
Um, are we, I'm not clear the extent of the motion. Amend the minute, you know, according to everything that April requested? Is that the motion?
Um, the motion is simply to amend the minutes. I'm not, if April wants to clarify in 10-
This is April. I'm a little fuzzy on how do we actually, we can agree, like, should we agree to amend the minutes? Do we, I mean, until we actually see those amended minutes, how can we vote to approve those?
I don't, I don't believe we need to, personally, I don't believe we need to vote to amend the minutes because the minutes haven't been accepted yet. I, I think we need to just vote on whether or not we want to approve these minutes, and if that fails, then because people have amendments they want to make, then they need to get those amendments to Sandy so that she can make them, and then we can review them, and we can approve them next time around.
Andy, can I make a comment, please?
Absolutely.
So this is Amy. Um, I, I, I'm going to try to take a stab at saying what I think Jean and Ann were both saying, which is for something simple, we can all discuss the simple amendment, so we're crystal clear on what it is. And then we, someone can make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. And we can do that all in one meeting. We don't have to see the amended minutes because it's just so simple. Um, so an example of that is if we wanted tonight to just direct Sandy to add the time that April joined the meeting. You know, that would be a simple thing. We don't need to review that. We could vote on that, you know, a motion to accept as amended. If we were going to do a motion to accept as amended and the amendment was the full extent of April's comments, we still could do that over voice only tonight and, and just sort of trust that April will convey to Sandy over email the extent of the comments that she noted tonight, and Sandy will plunk those into the minutes. I think it's better practice for something that lengthy for us to look at it a second time. So, you know, so I, I think there's an option to complete the vote to accept these tonight, but I think it would be either to accept them as they were originally proposed or to accept them as amended with a very simple amendment. And I don't feel strongly on any of those options. I think we have much higher priority items to be addressing tonight. But I just wanted to share, I do think it's possible to have an amendment that we can vote on tonight.
Andy, it's Jean.
Go ahead, Jean, and then I think Ann had her hand up.
Um, typically in the past, um, it's, it's rare, you know, mostly it's clear and everything like that, but, you know, I'd be in favor of, of, and, and Amy, you were spot on. Amending the minutes with April's time discrepancies, Andy would have to convert, uh, agree with you as far as the rest of the issues. I think it's, you know, it's wording, and there is a video record of what was actually said. So, um, you know, to what Amy said, uh, you know, that's, that's what I meant also, and that's what we've typically done in the past. Added those, you know, corrections and then vote on the minutes as amended.
This is April. Um, I understand that there is a video record of the meeting. However, I think it's important to recognize that the minutes of this board are the official records of this board, not the video. And that's why I think it's important that we take the time to make sure that our minutes reflect what was discussed, not only for us, but for those who may be walking in our footsteps years down the line, or maybe even this year.
I understand, actually, Ann, I think, were you waiting?
Yeah. What we've done in the past in the town is we make a motion to accept the minutes as presented, then we make the amendments, make the corrections, then we vote just the minutes as amended. Then what happens is if someone goes back saying I had some questions, I go back and I check those minutes, and if they're accurate, fine. If they're not, then we just bring them to the next minute, to the next meeting. So I think that would save time to accept these minutes as amended. Then April can check after to make sure that the information's updated. And that's how we've done it in the past.
We have a motion on the floor that says simply to amend the February 10th minutes. That's all it says. So we need to take some sort of action on that.
So the motion is to accept the February 10th, 2020 minutes amended?
Um, the current motion is just to amend the February 10th minutes. It's not specific, but it's not to accept. It was to accept, it got amended, and now it's to amend.
Who made the motion?
Uh, April.
April.
The initial motion, and she made the motion to amend the language.
So I'm thinking if you want to change the motion to accept the minutes as amended, circle back to see that the corrections have been updated.
This is April. I can support that, and as you can see, I'm still learning. I don't know everything, and I'm happy to admit that. Um, so I would, I would like to amend my amendment to accept the minutes as amended. I will also-
For that.
I will also take responsibility to review the proposed amendments, and if I see something, to bring that back to the board.
A second from Jean to amend the language of the motion to accept the minutes as amended. So this is just a vote on the amended language. Um, and it's been seconded by Jean, so a roll call vote to, to change the language again. Amy?
Actually,
Yeah.
Andy, can I stop you for a second? Because Ann and Amy were not part of the board at that point in time. They cannot vote on it.
So I, I think I still have to call them, and they have to abstain. Um, but this, on this, they can vote because this is just the amended language part. Uh, so Amy?
Yeah. Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And me, I'm a yes. Now we have a motion to accept the February 10 minutes as amended. Is there any other discussion before we call the question? All right, then on a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Same.
No.
And I'm a yes. So the motion-
I'll just, I'll just have to point out that, uh, both Ann and Amy voted yes to accept the minutes as amended, even though they were not board members at the time.
Noted.
But again, as you mentioned, we have video that's available to review that meeting.
Jean, just FYI, I was, I attended that meeting just as a guest, but I abstained on that vote. I did not vote yes on that vote. This is Amy.
That's what I heard. Sandy, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have that, and I voted yes, and, and Amy abstained.
Thank you. Right. Um, so I believe March 3rd was also with the old board. Um, so I'll accept a motion, at least so that we can get a conversation going on that one. A second?
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is April. I would also like to bring forth the issue that on March 3rd, 2020, the Pembroke School Board uh, did have a non-public session, and these minutes do not reflect non-public minutes.
Thank you. All right, so the current motion is to accept the March 3rd minutes has been seconded.
All right, so we entered, exited non-public. And a motion was made to seal the minutes. So what more are you looking for, April?
That we have an obligation to those non-public minutes, and they have not been presented to the board.
Any other discussion?
Uh, Andy, this is April. Just, um, a point of discussion, just in reviewing these minutes. I did, um, just as a reminder, because I'm not sure, um, this was before we, our new board members were elected. Um, there is some discussion on page five about, um, spacing at the Hill School and, um, regarding the, um, preschool. And it does say it in here that no final decisions have been made regarding the space. I'd just like to remind everyone that there was a decision made, the, um, not by this board, but we did hear from a community member in a public comment who was very concerned that our Title I preschool has been ended without the board's action.
Uh, I, I could be wrong. I think that that comment was at a later meeting, was it not?
Yeah, I believe so.
It was. It was.
So-
But-
We can say that we know that a, um, decision had been made by March 3rd.
Right, and I'm not asking that the minutes be changed, but this is just a point that on March 3rd, we were told no final decisions had been made. And later we heard from the public, a member in our community, that the Title I preschool is no longer.
Understood.
Patty?
All right, um, so there's a motion to accept the March 3rd minutes. Patty?
Patty's got her hand up.
Can I just clarify? I believe that section is talking about the SAU preschool, not title preschool, so we had been searching for a location um, to move that preschool. So I don't think that discussion was referencing the Title I preschool.
Thank you. Is it, is it true that our Title I preschool for Pembroke students will not be in effect for the 2021 school year? And that no action was taken by this board for that?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to go, we're, we're talking about the minutes right now. Maybe that can be a topic of discussion later, once we get through this.
Okay.
All right, um, so there's a motion to approve the March 3rd minutes. Um, a vote, April? Um, I'll vote, April?
No, because the board has not been presented with the minutes for non-public minutes.
Yes.
Anne?
Uh, I have abstained. Abstained.
And I'm a yes. Um, all right, so instead of, maybe we'll take a, a little bit here. Instead of going through these one by one, um, if they're, I don't know how best to do this. Do people have significant corrections that they want to submit to Sandy before we take action on any of the remaining minutes?
This is Amy, I do not.
Andy, this is Anne, I have corrections for the 21st, May 5th, and the 19th.
Andy, this is-
Anne, or something that we may be able to take up quickly and approve as amended?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, April?
Um, this is April, I have something, uh, just some clarifying questions. Uh, one thing that could probably be taken up pretty quickly with a specified amendment for 421.
All right, so it sounds like we've got a couple minor issues, but it sounds like we can take up, um, 421 right now if there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
This is Amy, I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Anne, I guess you've got something first?
On, on page five, where it says Anne sent a letter to the selectmen and the email was forwarded to David Joden. I think that was referring to Andy's email to the selectmen concerning the, um, the discussion about the selectmen joining the school board.
This is April, I had the same note.
I think that's correct. Can you, um, do you want to propose, um, a language change or addition?
Yeah, all it is, is change, um, Anne Bond to, um, to Andy. Um, page 17. Um, it was stated that, um, that use the money, it could, plus at this point stated that some of the money is related to employees. And then the word is missing is salaries.
Okay, Sandy, did you hear that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I had for April, uh, 21. Thank you.
Okay, April?
Thank you. On page one, under board member attendance tonight, my presence is not notated. So April Vilani should be marked as present. That does seem quite significant. Um, so also on page three, um, it says, under April Vilani, it says Ms. Vilani stated, it's usually just a click. And then it says, she reported that Karen Yaton is recording the meeting at the town hall. I'm curious who did that, because I did not declare that Karen Yaton was recording the meeting at town hall. That was not me. So that is inaccurate. Um, so I would like that struck, because I did not report that on page three. Um, going to page 17. Oh, by the way, also on page five, I just noticed when it lists the, um, selectmen, that it says Mike Crockwell, instead of Mike Crockwell. And I think it would be nice to spell, um, someone's name correctly. Okay, and then going forward to page 17. Oh, sorry, before we get to, to page 17, um, page 12, it's the, uh, third starting paragraph down that says, Ms. Vilani was curious about maintaining the sense of community for some children with different needs and concerns. That was not my inquiry. My inquiry was about the sense of community for students. So I would like that to accurately reflect what my inquiry was. Um, and then going to page 17, top paragraph, Ms. Vilani asked about the at-risk survey. That is incorrect. I asked about the climate culture survey. And that's the one that Jean had told us that when he was the New Hampshire School Board Association, uh, delegate at the Assembly, um, Shaker Regional, presented about the climate culture survey. So that was not at risk, that was climate culture. So I'm asking that that be, uh, corrected as well. And that looks like all I have for 421.
Okay, so we currently have a motion to accept 421. Is there any other discussion before we move the question?
This is April, I do have a question of on, on page two, second paragraph. Um, it says, in the 317 minutes, she shared a concern with the list of the proposed budget cuts of, um, 806,000. I'm just curious who she is, because the person mentioned before that is my name. And that was not me, so it almost infers that I'm the person who asked that. I thought that was Anne, but I'm not sure. So Anne, were you the one to ask about the list of the proposed bu- budget cut?
Yes, thank, yes, it was me.
Okay, and then just, um, the third paragraph down, again, it says she in the second line. And I'm not sure who that she is. So I think it would be a nice clarification on who she is.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, so current motion is to accept the minutes from April 21st, um, on a roll call vote. Amy?
Sorry, my phone fell asleep. This is Amy, I'm a yes.
April?
No.
Anne?
So these are, this motion is not to accept the minutes as amended, right? No.
Jean?
No.
And I'm a yes. So that one fails, so we'll have to revisit. Um, please send the corrections that you have, uh, to Sandy.
I make, I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second, this is Anne.
Jean, can you just specify the date, please?
420, the minutes of 421.
Thank you. Anne, did you second that?
Yes.
All right, um, on a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So again, please get those concerns over to Sandy as quickly as possible. Um, so I'll go, um, on May 5th, do we, do we have short things for May 5th that we can accept tonight?
This is Anne, I just have a couple of grammar items.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, do we need a motion to accept the minutes as, as?
Motion to, motion to accept the minutes of 5, 520.
Thank you, is there a second?
Do we need to amend them? Don't we need to amend them?
No.
Yeah, we have to, to discuss them, we have to have a motion to accept and we can amend the motion.
Excellent. All right, Anne, second.
All right, seconded, um, Anne, if you want to tell us what you've got?
Um, just, um, three, um, it said Anne asked the school board post draft minutes. Um, in the second paragraph, it's, um, stating that David is on a call in case there's discussions about 3D and the budget for meeting. I don't know what 3D means.
It would have been agenda item 3D, but that may be the meeting where we moved agenda items around a lot. I'm not sure. So I'm not sure if 3D is actually accurate or not.
Um, and then on page four, where, um, let's see. Third paragraph down, uh, Ms. Bond stated that the tuition would be more than 3,600. Um, it was concerning about the taxpayers picking up the difference. Um, Ms. Sherman stated that the Pembroke is an open school and can accept students. Then we were discussing, there is an RSA that's a tribute to school choice. But there's nothing in here that states that the residents of Pembroke would pick up the 9,223 difference. And then the last one was just on page 10. In the first paragraph, they were discussing the area agreement meeting. Um, and it was stated that the towns were looking for a check instead of reduction in um, the last statement and sentence is, is not refunding, but a revenue reconciliation offset credit for a one-time transaction. And I believe what it was said, it was that there, there is a check that's cut to the district. And that's all I had. And I'll sit to Sandy.
Thank you.
This is April. Um, I did give, when I was looking through that, I did compare my notes. And we were told that there is not a check cut. But this, this wording, we're on page 10, at the first paragraph, does seem to be matched my notes about, it's not refunding, but a revenue reconciliation, an off-site set credit for a one-time transaction. That does, um, that is in line with the language that Amber used at that meeting. To que-
I'm sorry.
Maybe, I think maybe, Anne, what you might be thinking about is, I did ask about, was there a check issued?
Okay.
So-
Drop that part, and I'll erase it from my email to Sandy.
Any other discussion?
April, um, and here, the one thing, also on page that I did not see noted, and keeping in mind that we have had selectmen, uh, tuning in, um, I did not see noted in here that our superintendent advised that the school district requested towns where we worked by Christine and Amber. That was omitted, and I, I would like to suggest that we add that, um, to show why they had not received that yet. But that, that the district was indeed working on that, to confirm that.
All right, any other comments? All right, the current motion is to approve the minutes from May 5th, 2020, um, on a roll call vote. Anne? I'm sorry, Anne, I didn't hear it.
Um, that was no.
Thank you. Uh, April?
I'm sorry, I need to change the settings on my phone. Um, I'm, I'm a no. And then before we move on to anything else, can I make a comment, please, Andy, after this vote is concluded?
Absolutely. Jean?
No.
And a yes. So that fails, we'll have to revisit. Please get your revisions to Sandy as soon as possible. And Amy, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I, I think we don't have to, um, I might be getting confused in the process, but I don't think we have to have the type of vote that we just have. I think we can have a motion to approve the minutes of X date, a second on that discussion. And then if the consensus of the group is that the proposed amendments make sense, then we can amend that motion to be to accept the minutes as amended. And then we can vote on that motion.
Yes, that is-
We don't ever have to vote on the original motion to accept, I think, just for, for future reference, if it makes it a little quicker.
That's correct. So, May 12th?
So I, I guess, can, I think like what Jean did last time, I'd be happy to make a motion for, um, to accept the minutes of, I think it was May 5th, as amended.
This is April, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Um, we've had a lot of discussions, so I'm just going to go to the vote on May 5th as amended. Um, Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. So again, please get revisions to Sandy as soon as possible. Um, so moving on.
I made a motion to accept the minutes for May 12th, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
This is Amy, I'll second.
Well, Jean beat you to it, Amy. It was close, though. Um, are the discussion on the May 12th minutes?
Anne has no corrections.
Anybody else?
Can we just check item number three? I've lost track of the minutes. It was either these minutes or the next minute that had Jean voting twice. And, um, I believe it was Andy not counted in the vote. I can't remember which date, but I remember it was number three. I can get there in a second.
Vote early, vote often.
It's not these minutes, it's the next one, forget it, sorry.
If there's no other comments, um, there's a motion to accept the May 12th, 2020 minutes on a roll call vote. Um, Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. Uh, May 19th?
This is Amy, I'll move to accept the minutes for May 19th as proposed.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Amy, it sounded sound like you had something for the 19th?
Yeah, so it's number three, um, minutes of previous meeting. And if you look at the bolded type in the motion, uh, the board voted first, Mr. Gauss voted yes. And then last, Mr. Gauss voted no. As I seem to recall, that last vote was Mr. Cammidge.
Yep, I agree. Thank you for that. We're discussing about the 519 minutes.
Andy, this is Anne, I just had, um, a couple of grammar.
Sure.
Um, on page eight, the last paragraph, um, Amy, she understands, however, from a legal perspective, the minutes are recording. Um, and it just said, um, at the very last sentence, Ms. Bond stated that she sits on a lot of boards, comma, and each board member reviews, um, the minutes. So it was just a comma in the end. And then on page nine, to approve all the projects' priority as number one, two, and three, and funded by the trust. And all listed from the operating budget was made by Ms. Menzeli, second by Jean Gauss. I believe the items number one and two listed from the operating budget was approved. So one, two, and three from the trust was approved, but only items one and two from the operating budget was approved. Cause that totaled the 88,000 that's listed in the next paragraph.
I believe that's accurate. Is that how everybody else remembers it? It was all of them from trust and one and two from operating budget?
Yes.
So the next paragraph down at the very end, it says $88,000 for the project listed as priority number one and number three. That should be a number two. And that's all I had. And I'll send the-
Thank you. There's a discussion of May 19. Does anybody, um, uh, Amy, do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to accept the minutes of 519 as amended.
I'll send.
Thank you very much. So, uh, second with Anne, did you get that, Sandy? So this is, just to be clear, this is a vote on amending the language of the original motion, um, on a roll call vote. We'll go, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yep.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. And so.
Can I just make a correction? Um, Amy, I'll put that correction in my email to Sandy, so you don't have to send a separate one. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, and that one, just I have, thank you. Save you an email.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to accept the May 19th, 2020 minutes as amended, on a roll call vote. Uh, Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. One more, um, May 21.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 21st, 2020, as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
This is Amy, I'll second.
You beat you again. All right, um, is there discussion on the May 21st minutes?
Andy, this is April. Um, I just have something. On the first page, when it notes, um, who is in those, uh, those meetings with us? The one thing I didn't see is when it lists Mrs. Philine's name, it does not say Recording Secretary. And I think that it would be prudent and also forthcoming to list her role that she needs Recording Secretary. So that it's very clear that she's not in there as the employee, that she's in there as the board's Recording Secretary.
All right, any other discussion on May 21? And we will move the question, um, the current motion to accept the May 21st, 2020 as presented. Um, Amy?
Do we want to amend it?
I make a motion to amend the May 21st, 2020 minutes as amended.
This is April, I'll second that.
All right, so there's a motion to amend the language of the motion. We'll walk on the vote. April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. So back to the original motion, um, to now accept the May 21st, 2020 minutes as amended. On a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, thank you. Um, if I could just take one more minute, I, I have a suggestion, and I don't want this to turn into a big, huge discussion. So if people don't like it, let me know, and, and we can talk about it later. We've spent hours approving minutes, and I'm trying to think of ways to make sure that never has to happen again. I think all of the changes are important, and it's good that we have concerned eyes looking at these. I'm wondering if going forward, to give both ourselves, um, more time to review and make adjustments, as well as Sandy to reflect those adjustments. I'm wondering if we should, um, have a policy, or I don't know if we need to make an official policy, but my thought was, if we took up the minutes from a particular meeting, um, two weeks later rather than one week later. And if Sandy got us those minutes, and we all submitted any concerns that we had back to her, and we had two weeks to do that, and for her to make those revisions, that then by two, two meetings later, um, hopefully we could have a much easier time. Everybody's changes would be in there. Sandy could send us an email, or Patty could send us an email via, from Sandy, when the final draft is done, and everybody's changes have been, um, included, and then we could all review and make sure that we're on board with all those changes. And hopefully that would, that would, you know, help us out and get through this a little bit quicker, um, if we had that little bit of a lag. Does that sound reasonable to people?
Well, Andy, this is Anne.
Sounds super.
We had seven, we had seven week, I mean, meetings to do, so that's probably why it took so long. But the only thing is, I'm thinking of, of Sandy, if we have three different people send her corrections to the same exact sentence, what is she going to come back with? I'm, I'm just thinking that any one with the Sandy, as going forward, we're only going to have one minute, one meeting to approve now.
Hopefully. Yeah, and, and I'm fine with that, too. If we want to continue as we have, and, and, you know, if we get ourselves in this situation again, um, then, then we make changes. This was a very unique thing. We've got two sets of minutes from prior board. We've got a pandemic in the middle here, so yeah, it's definitely an odd situation. So, um, I'm okay with, with waiting on changes, too. I would just say, you know, if we can all make an effort to make sure we've reviewed the minutes before the next meeting every time, so that we can move these things along. I think everybody on the board has said at one point or another in the past four or five weeks that, um, it's really not fair to the public to not have these done in a timely fashion. So I would urge all of us to try to make that happen as best we can.
Andy, this is April. Oh, I'll wait on Amy, go ahead, Amy.
Thanks, April. Um, I, I just want to make sure, you know, every board I've ever served on has always, outside of the meeting, the board member reviews the minutes, and if they have any comments, they send them to the person who's taking the minutes before the, the next meeting. I would like to have the option to do that. You know, maybe we don't have, have to do it that way, but I'd like us to all have the option. Do we have that option?
I think we do, and I think Sandy, um, if you, you know, like Anne said, it, it could be possible that three different people send you a correction to the same statement. And I guess I would say if that happens, we, we could start checking in with Sandy when we, when we're at the agenda item for the minutes. And she can let us know if there was, you know, if there was concern over one particular item, and there was, um, a differ, a difference of opinion. And we can take that up at that time. I think that's entirely appropriate. But to your question, I don't think there's anything stopping you from sending changes to Sandy for her to incorporate. I think we would just need to be notified that that happened, because if we, you know, if I reviewed the minutes one day, and then you sent changes, and two days later, there are changes in there now, I might not know to go back and, and review it again. So as long as communication is on point, and we know when changes have been made, I think that's okay.
Andy, this is Ian, can I just make a, a question, a suggestion? If we check with the New Hampshire Municipal School Board Association? Because the New Hampshire Municipal Association says that any corrections for minutes, um, must be done in a public meeting. I don't know if the school board has a different stance on that.
So can I just comment on that, Andy?
Sure.
This would be made at a public meeting, Anne. There wouldn't be any sort of like, outside of the public view minutes. What I envision will happen is, you know, using what happened tonight, for an example, I would have emailed Sandy and said, "Hey Sandy, you've got Jean voting twice, but really I think that second vote was Andy." And then at the meeting, when discussion came to approve the minutes, Sandy would say, "Just so everybody knows, I received the following comments on the minutes. Amy said this, Anne said this, Andy said this." And it's just a little bit more efficient.
I think that would be allowed, but I, I can't speak for the school board.
That sounds reasonable to me.
I'm in agreement with, uh, Amy on this.
All right, great. Um, so let's move on to agenda item number three.
Actually, before we move on, uh, this is April, I, I would like to be recognized and speak on what we just spoke about, if possible, about the minutes and reviewing the minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so my concern is there are times that this board has not received the minutes. Uh, sometimes it's less than 24 hours ahead, or even 48 hours ahead. I think it's important to remember that, yes, we do get a, a moderate stipend for our service, but many of us have other commitments. Besides this school board, it's not a full-time job, and that we need adequate time to review these minutes before we attend a meeting. And I do see that the, uh, minutes are on here to be reviewed, and I think that's something we should take up. If we're expecting the minutes to be reviewed, and for all of us to do that, we need to make sure that we have an appropriate amount of time to do that. I think that's also very professional to allow that. Thank you.
Agenda item three, immediate business. Um, so we will open it up for public comments, um, where I'll keep it to 15 minutes. I did see one person in the chat, let me see, um, Carrie Dean, if you're still with us, if you want to unmute, you can go ahead.
Andy, can you hear me? Okay. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody, um, the teachers especially, um, for getting us to the last day of school. Hooray, it's the last day of school, it's the last day of remote learning. My children have all survived Dean Academy, so that's good. But I would also like to thank Sandy. Um, she's been doing the minutes for the board for a very, very long time. I think I heard 20 years. And I also want to apologize to her that she's kind of being nitpicked this evening. There are far more important things going on right now than a comma and an and, 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 and a lot of the things that I'm hearing. We need to, we need to focus on the far more important things. That being said, I'll leave that alone, because you know I've been a big proponent of getting these minutes out to the public sooner, a lot sooner. And I want to end with just saying thank you to Mrs. Griffiths, and also to Mr. Familari for doing a good job for Pembroke. And we're going to miss you, but good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Andy, would you like me to unmute the folks on the phone?
Ha, I didn't unmute myself, but yes, that's actually what I just said to nobody. So yeah, well, go ahead and mute everybody, unmute the phone lines. If you're on the telephone, if you've called in, and you've got something for public comment, just state your name, and you'll be recognized. If you are on the computer, while the folks on the phone are speaking, if you want to drop a line in the chat, then when we come back to that, I will recognize you then. Um, so it looks like we only have a couple on the phone, and one of them's Amy. So, um, the other folks are, do any of you have anything to add for public comment? All right, I think we can close those up again, Patty. I don't see anything else in the chat. I'll give it 30 seconds or so. If anybody on the computer wants to drop their name in the chat.
Amy, did I keep you on?
Let's see, am I on?
Thank you, yes.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing anything, so let's move on to, uh, agenda item 3B, which is the agenda review. Hope we could go over the topics that we have on the agenda for tonight. Um, we do have gift or donation, got a couple of things on the consent agenda. Um, we will talk about the meeting schedule, um, for the upcoming school year. Um, we've got a memo of understanding with Pembroke Support Staff Association, um, which is the par, para-professionals union, sorry. Continuing business, everybody can see what's on the agenda there. I don't think I need to go over it one by one. We do have one policy review, um, regarding minutes. Informational items at the end, public comments, we'll have one more section for that at the end as well. Um, we will go into non-public if, um, superintendent tells us that we need to. It looks like we've got some appointments and resignations, and or retirements. And that'll do it. If there's anybody on the board that has, um, would like added tonight, we can discuss that.
I do, Andy.
Sure.
Um, we, if the board is willing, we added another resume today. I was able to get one more interview in, um, and I would love to be able to nominate that person this evening, if, if the board, um, feels comfortable doing that.
Yep, um, I would say that's immediate business, so can we put in a 3G for nomination? Or do we need? Oh yeah, sorry. Gotcha.
Before, yep. And then I have some, um, informational items at the end, and that's it.
All right.
Uh, Andy, this is Ian, I wanted to find out if we could add the current state of affairs.
Could you be a little more specific?
Just to see where we're looking at for our, um, our, um, what do you, not the capital of reserves, but the, the amount that is returned to the public for tax relief, and to find out if we have any of the savings that are coming back from being closed, the fuel, uh, service savings.
I think that can be under the 2021 budget in 4B. I'll make a note that you've got specific questions there.
Okay, speaking of the 20, of the 1920 budget, the 2021 budget is for July.
Okay, yeah, um, so let me, I'll put it right in the same spot. Maybe I'll just change 4B to say 20, uh, 1920 and 2021 budgets.
And I just have another question, um, only because this is probably what, my fourth or fifth meeting? Um, I just wanted to find out, when I go into our shared drive, there's 13 items listed there, but they're not listed on the agenda. Or is there, so, is that something that we need to read every single thing on that item before our meeting?
So, um, Patty can speak a little bit better. So everything that gets put in there goes through Kathy, Patty's secretary. And there's some reason for it. Um, so I see things in there about the driving school, it's something that we've talked about in the past. Usually if anybody requested something from last meeting, um, it would get put in there. There's all of the minutes, you know, that we've discussed are in there. Um, so they should be related to this meeting in one way or another. So yeah, I mean, it's up to you. I, I try to read everything that I think is pertinent before the meeting. This is a big list, bigger than normal. I would say, uh, Jean, April, jump in here, but I, typically, this is more like five or six documents. You have got one set of minutes from last time, the agenda, and maybe three or four supporting documents. It's also resume season, so that adds, adds to the bulk a little bit, but, um, yeah, so I guess I rambled, but short answer, they should all be related to this meeting in one way or another. But this is an exceptionally long list of documents.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm prepared.
Andy, can I speak to that, too?
Absolutely.
So the number of items is not necessarily going to match up with your agenda. Like you said, there's multiple items under some. Um, and there may be a couple of documents in the shared drive that aren't on the agenda, but I would mention during informational items. Like for tonight, Amber updated the enrollment tracking, and that's something that I'll mention at the end, that it's there just for informational purposes, um, for you. And then as Andy said, sometimes the board requests, um, documents, and we try to get them into the drive for the next meeting, so that you have them, even if they're not on the agenda.
Welcome.
Anybody else comments for agenda review, things that you think need to be discussed tonight?
Andy, this is April. Um, I would like to suggest that the board address the Title I preschool on March 17th, we had a concerned citizen. Mentioned that in, um, public comment. And, um, I think it is worthwhile of the board's time, uh, to discuss what has happened to our Title I preschool.
Okay, uh, we've got a pretty heavy agenda tonight, April, so if I could ask you to, uh, make a motion to add that, we'll just see what the board wants to do, if that's fair.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion that we add to the agenda, agenda, uh, title, Pembroke's Title I preschool.
Second.
This is Anne, I second.
Thank you. Um, I think we can just go to a vote on that. Um, April?
Actually, Andy, I just wanted to have some discussion, which is, uh, this is Amy. Um, I, I know time is of the essence, we've gone through a lot of time already, and that's the nature of my comment, which is, I think that that's a really important issue. I do think that the board should discuss it. We already have a long agenda tonight, and I want to be able to give it my all, not my 10 o'clock all, which is significantly less than my. And I want to be able to give it my all, not my 10 o'clock all, which is significantly less than my eight o'clock all. And so I will not be voting in favor of this motion, but I would be happy to address it at the next meeting or the one after that.
Anybody else comments before I move to the vote?
Andy, this is April. One of my concerns of not having it on the agenda or a commitment to discuss it at a future meeting is that this is something that could easily slip through and the board not address before school reconvene's in the fall. And there's a lot of prep work that goes in and preparing over the summer, screening of children. And I think that's why it's important to discuss it early in the summer instead of later.
Thank you. All right. On a roll call vote to add the Title One preschool to tonight's agenda, Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
No.
Amy?
No.
And I'm a no. April, I agree. I think we should put that on the agenda for next time around. I will make a note to let Kathy know when she sends the next agenda for my review. Sorry, let me just jot a note. I'm trying to talk and write at the same time. It's not working. All right. Any other agenda review discussion before we move on? Hearing none. Agenda item three C, gifts and donations. We have one. Patty?
So Suzie may want to speak to this a little bit more, but Sarah Sharilla has been doing some work with Heinemann Publishing Company as we've shared with the board. For those of you who are new to the board, I can let Suzie give you a little bit more information, but we, because of her generosity and letting them film her, they are sending us $7,312 worth of guided reading materials. So I can, if it's okay with you, Andy, I can let Suzie give you a little bit more information.
Please.
So Patty's right on that Sarah Sharilla and the host classroom, which was Lindsay Powell's, as well as a lot of the fourth grade teachers who helped during a full day of recording from Heinemann Publishing Company. They are, they are the publishing company that works with literacy collaborative out of Leslie University with Irene Fountas and Gesu Pennell, who are the gurus of literacy. That just speaks to the level of work that's happening at the elementary level on in literacy that our teachers and our students are getting filmed for other teachers to learn how to do the collaborative. It was a huge honor. It's actually the second time that they have been to the school to film. On this particular occasion, Sarah Sharilla was incredibly ill and she powered through anyway. They had to do a lot of edits because her voice went in and out and in and out. And like I said, the other fourth grade teachers were fantastic about taking the students that day and having meaningful work for them. And so in gratitude to the Pembroke Hill team, Heinemann did an entire series of guided reading books, which is to the tune of over $7,000 to the Pembroke Hill School and faculty directly for our students. And so kudos to the, the team on that one.
Thank you. So do we need, we need a motion to accept, I believe?
Yes.
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
That was Jean and Ann. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. A roll call vote to accept the donation from, I'm not even going to try to say it because I'll get it wrong. On a roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you all. Thanks, Suzie.
You're welcome.
Before we move on, Patty, there was something that I brought to you before, and I'm not sure if it should go here or if it's already coming forward consent, consent agenda?
Oh, no, it's not on here. I apologize. I don't think we got it on.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, I was approached about another donation. Is it okay with you guys if I, if we take care of that right now?
Yes.
Yes, from April.
Yes, thank you. So I was approached by somebody who requested to remain anonymous. They wanted to make a donation of $1,500 towards graduation. Their preference would be to do something extra for the seniors in Pembroke, if possible. But they also understood that the people that arrange such things are extremely stressed right now and have many other priorities. So they were willing to also say that if that was not feasible, if, if there wasn't time to come up with an idea, or you know, if it just wasn't going to work out for whatever reason, they would be also happy with that money going towards the bill for the plan at Fisher Cat Stadium. So that's all I can really say.
I make a motion to accept the donation.
Second.
And Jean? Is there any discussion? All right. We've got a motion to accept on a roll call vote. April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item three D, there's a couple of consent agenda items. Patty?
Sure. I put in some information from Josh for the wood chip bids. There was an email and he shared what the bids were for each company as well as his recommendation. And then the Amber prepared a memo for the board regarding Frieler's Driving School.
We need a motion on the wood chips?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the bid for the wood chips at CCM Logging and Land Clearance at 4250 a ton, recommended by Josh.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Hold on. I've got something in the chat from April that says she cannot hear anyone. I'm going to send her a note, ask her if she wants to disconnect or reconnect. So if we could pause for one moment, please.
Jean, I beat you on seconding.
I was going to comment on that last one. I give it the three second count.
Okay, all right.
Oh, it looks like she's back. Excellent.
Andy, can I make a motion again?
Sure.
I make a motion to accept the wood chip bid for CCM Logging and Land Clearing LLC for 4250 a ton, recommended by Josh Coughlin.
Amy, two seconds.
Excellent. Is there any discussion?
Question. Josh, what typically in the past has been the tonnage price?
I think last year, I believe we were at 4450. 4250 is right there at the bottom since the time I've been pricing them out. And in my time, I've seen it as high as 55 we've paid. So the market's down and the price clearly shows it right now.
Nice.
Andy, can I just thank Josh for getting five different quotes?
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
Right. If there's no other discussion, we've got a motion to accept the bid from CCM Logging and Land Clearing LLC at 4250 a ton, recommended by Josh Coughlin on a roll call vote. April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Ann?
Yes.
Jean? Didn't hear you, Jean.
Yes.
Thank you. And Andy's a yes. Thanks again. Josh, Patty, oh, the other one was the driving school is, do we still need to do, take action on that one, Patty?
Yes. So Amber's here, if you wanted to hear from her, but she did prepare the memo for you explaining the conversation that she had with Mr. Frieler, who indicated that if the fee was not waived to $300, that he would be increasing the cost per student to $700. However, when Amber asked him, he did indicate that that's in the average range for what other schools charge.
Andy, can I make a motion to?
Sure, go ahead, Ann.
I just wanted to make a motion to put this to our June 15th meeting. There's a lot of different amounts. We have letters that were just added this afternoon that Amber had a discussion with the gentleman. And the contract has absolutely no fees listed of what the facility fees. So I wanted to find out if we could make, I would make a motion to put this to the June 15th.
Is there a second to table this until June 15th?
Second.
Can I just ask that clarify? I, I would love it if that motion had a why in it, like for what purpose are we putting it off? You know, what additional information do we need? Or is it that we don't need any additional information? We just need more time. And we could say why? That would be great.
Yes, I would amend that motion. The reason why is because the contract is between the Pembroke Academy and the Friers Driving School. And I believe it should be with Pembroke School District because the building can't go into a contract. This would be with the district. Also, nothing here to say the amounts of the fees that he would be paying for the facility. It only shows the $600. And in Amber's discussion with him today, he was changing the amount to 700. So the contract's not even ready to vote on.
Is there still a second for that motion? Maybe we should restate that motion succinctly.
I make a motion to move the, the contract between Pembroke School District and the Friers Driver School to our June 15th meeting. As the wording for the contract does not have the facility fees that he's going to be paying, he also changed the amount on number three, number two, from 600 to 700.
Is there a second?
This is April. I will second that. And may I clarify why? Or you want to wait for discussion?
No, I just, I want to double check first. I'll accept your second, but I want to double check before you start. I think, Sandy, did we have an open motion already? I got a motion that got seconded before that one, but I.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Can you read that to me?
Table and put on the June 15th meeting by Ann and Jean. And Ann explained that it had contract, didn't have the fees listed. Then you have them, and Ann said that we would amend it to include contract between PA and Frieler's. That was a correction. And the motion to move the contracts between Pembroke School District and Friar, as the wording for the contract doesn't include facility fee and the changing of the student fee.
So April, do you, do you want to make your comments now, or do you want to vote on the amended language first and then make your comments?
I would like to clarify why I am seconding that. I think if this motion is approved, that during the discussion, we would be able to provide some sort of feedback to our superintendent regarding what we would like to see next time we take up this issue. And that is why I'm seconding it.
All right. So currently there is a motion simply to amend the original language to match what Sandy just stated for us. If we could have a roll call vote on the amended language. April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
I missed it in.
I'm sorry. My video keeps coming out. Yes, Ann, yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. So now the, the motion is to table the discussion of the contract between Pembroke Schools and Friers Driving School until the June 5th meeting for the reasons stated in the motion that Sandy read to us. And I think we already have a second for that. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just clarify something? Thanks. So I just want to remind the board that earlier on, there were two, two recommendations for the contract. One was made by Amy and there was a legal correction. And then the other was by Ann, who wanted to add the wording for paying what the district would normally charge. So whatever the fee is in your policy. So we had told Mr. Frieler to make those changes and that's when he countered with wanting you to waive the fee again to $300. So my intention after this evening, and I think April was indicating that you could give direction to us. So if you, by consensus, maybe could just say, you know, yes, go back to him and tell him we are, we're not intending to waive the fee. And then we can have him update the contract with all of the terms that we would ask you to vote on at the next meeting, if that makes sense.
I think that sounds reasonable. Is everybody generally in consensus to that, to the direction to give? Patty?
Yes. Andy, this is Ann. I just have a question. In our facility fees, it says if they're nonprofit driving school, they're category two. So what would be his category? Would it be category two or three because he's profit? So I wasn't sure the amount that we would be charging for classroom.
Patty or Amber, do you guys have that?
I think Josh knows the answer to that, if we can ask him.
Yep, that's okay.
So it, the past history, what we've charged him is a 300 bucks per session because that's been the board. So he hasn't really fallen into a category because it was a wave from the school board to charge him $300. But he is a for-profit company.
So what would be the fee that would be charged now? Oh, Amber's waving.
I put that in the letter. It's in the first paragraph. So instead of being 300, it would be 1,200. So in that first paragraph that I put in that, in your, in the drive?
Yes.
It's stated in there. $1,200.
Andy, may we ask clarification on that? Because when I'm looking at policy KF use of school facilities under category three, which is for-profit organizations. Yes, I see Amber waving. I just see a minimum of $30 and I'm assuming that's for the four hours. So if there's only a two hour per session class at $30 for class for a, are we charging for a regular classroom?
I believe it comes under category two. I don't have the policy in front of me, but I want to say that there are a list of types of businesses that would be considered under category two.
Category two list, tax exempt, not-for-profit. And I did search, I did an IRS search, and Frieler's is not a tax exempt organization. So they would fall under category three, which is private for-profit organizations.
I'll have to look up the policy, but I remember seeing something showing that it falls under category two. And that's why it came up to 1,200, because we use category two. And he actually read the, he read the policy too, and he came up with category two as well. So I just need to reread that to be sure that that is accurate.
I believe what may be somewhat ambiguous there is category two clearly states that it's not-for-profit and that a not, proof of nonprofit status will need to be provided, or certificate of tax exempt status. It does list an example of a driver education classroom training, but again, they're a for-profit business. But again, they're a for-profit business. So I, they would not follow under the not-for-profit category two.
So can we just get some clarification for that for the next meeting?
Sure.
All right. So I think we, uh, I want to ask one question. Um, Patty or Amber, is it, what, what's the time sensitivity around this? Is there a window? Is, um, does he need to know by a certain date and anything like that?
I think it expires in September, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to table the discussion about Frylers Driving School until the June 15th meeting. Um, seconded for the reasons that were listed in the motion you read for us. Discussion, we can go ahead and vote.
This is April Moore discussion. I just want to echo Ann's sentiment in this driver education contract. It's referenced Pembroke Academy and number nine states that Pembroke Academy will be named as the insured. I think it's important that the Pembroke School District is named as the insured, not just Pembroke Academy. And I see Josh's hand.
Any insurance binder we take in for the district, we do make them state the Pembroke School District is the additional insured. So that is wrong, but when it comes to us, we make sure that's corrected.
Jean, did you have something?
Yeah, um, one thing, I, I'm not, again, some tabling it to the 15th. But one thing I do want to do, make, uh, make note of is that we've been charging them $300 per session. We're going to now charge them $1,200 per session moving forward. I'm not opposed to that. That rate go to $700 versus the $600 that they had originally proposed, which is in line with other driving schools in the area. But if you come to the conclusion that they are not category two and are category three and that rate goes up, at this point, you're, you may be, um, pushing students that could be taking that course out of the course. If that, that rate per session goes higher for, um, you know, respective drivers. So that is my comment. We are making four times what we would be making in the past. So just, you know, moving forward when we talk about it on the, on the 15th, please, everybody keep that in mind.
Jean, any other discussion?
April, again, I would like to see the breakdown of the charges of the 1,200 because I did do the math myself and I calculated based on the information that there's, um, 15 classes per session and that a rate of $30 rental per session would be $450 per session. But it, um, per class for the whole one session, but for seven sessions, that would be $3,150. Um, so that I just need clarification on what are we actually charging? Am I doing the math wrong? Because I'm not coming up with $1,200 when I look at the fee schedule.
Andy, this is Amy. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
And I apologize for sounding like a broken record here, but I think we might be working our way into the weeds that is the detailed job of the superintendent and the other staff at the school district. And I would encourage us to call the question.
Thank you. Um, we have a vote table for the reasons already discussed. It's been seconded. Um, so on a roll call vote table until June 15th?
Andy?
Go ahead, Patty.
I just want the minutes to be accurate. In two weeks, um, is, are you intending to meet on the 16th?
I'm sorry. I guess we have a discussion of our schedule coming up later. Um, can, uh, we have to do another.
Do you want?
The next. The next meeting would be good.
Is that okay? The motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Anne. Okay. So we have a motion on the table to table this discussion until our next meeting for the reasons previously discussed. On a roll call vote.
Yes.
Anne? Sorry, Anne, I missed it again.
I'm sorry. My video keeps going out. I vote yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So I guess, um, Amber, any clarification that we can get next time around would be appreciated, both as far as what category he would fall under and the, the math breakdown of what the actual charges would be, um, would help us with that discussion. Sorry, I misputted my agenda. All right. Um, so moving on to agenda item three E, which is the 2021 school board meeting schedule.
So, um, when we do the schedule, the, we don't start until the next fiscal year. So if you're going to add the meeting in two weeks, we would need to make sure we just clarify that for June. Typically, this board has had, um, July off. We didn't put any July meetings on here because I'm assuming it wouldn't follow the typical schedule. Um, I think that we probably are going to have to meet this summer of, because of obvious reasons with the planning and, and what will happen in the fall. But we don't necessarily have to set the typical schedule. You guys can talk about that as a separate discussion. But what we did do for, for next year's schedule is, um, stick to what you've typically had for meetings. At, at your request, we did add a second meeting. For every month, typically we met twice a month only during budget season, but, um, earlier on you indicated that you wanted to meet twice a month throughout the year. So we did that. Um, and please note, there are a couple of, or maybe only one this year. There's a Monday meeting, so it doesn't always fall on the same Tuesday, you know? Amy had mentioned earlier, don't put the second and fourth Tuesday because that's not really what the schedule is. It doesn't always fall that way. So, um, we have the schedule and unless anyone, um, has any issue with it, we will publish it when you're ready.
I have some questions on the schedule.
Sure.
The, uh, the first question, um, just to make note that December, uh, September 8th is going to be a primary election. Also, November of 3rd will be, um, an election also. So the residents will be probably counting the ballots because it's going to be a big one because it's the presidential election. Um, I wanted to make a motion to move that Monday meeting, December 14th to December 15th. Um, there's a selectmen meeting that evening. Also February 9th and 23rd, that happens to be the third Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday. And I wanted to see if we could move that to the second instead of the ninth and the third to, um, um, I don't, I'm going to write down the date. And the only other item I had is June 8th is a, a Tuesday. And that's not the first Tuesday that we normally meet. So I wanted to see if we can change that to six, one.
So I know sometimes these things are based on school breaks or whatever. Patty, do you, can you address the ones that Ann mentioned and, and let us know if there was a reason like for the Monday meeting and things like that?
Yeah. So that Monday meeting, um, so we do build the schedule around the other districts as well. Um, and Deerfield has their budget committee meetings on Tuesdays. So that would mean during budget season that Amber and I would not be able to attend if you changed it to a Tuesday. Um, that's obviously at the discretion of the board, but just know that you wouldn't have S E U representation that evening. Um, unless we could get someone else to cover. Um, and then the other dates, I would have to go back. Kathy had a really big grid for the S A U. Um, so if you, I would suggest we wait until the next meeting. So I can just go and check, um, the suggestions that Ann made and make sure it wasn't for a specific reason. Um, and then I can bring that to you at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Do other people have comments on the proposed schedule?
Andy, this is April. I noticed that, uh, one of the proposed dates was Tuesday, February 23rd. And I would just like to bring up that that is, um, when winter schedule, uh, winter recess is, uh, currently scheduled in the district.
Thank you. I, I guess my only comment would be, um, and, and I think this already is kind of the case, but my input is for my own sanity to try to stick to Tuesdays as much as possible. Because my brain likes routine, I guess. Um, anybody else's comments?
Andy, this is April. I would just echo that. I think it'd be nice to stick to Tuesday for consistency.
Can I just clarify that?
Schedule to plan ahead. Thank you.
So am I hearing that the Monday, you would want to keep the meeting on Tuesday even if Amber and I can't attend? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I, I would not. Uh, just in every, in every case that it's possible under, you know, normal circumstances. I, I would prefer to have, um, at least you available if, if we have a date where you can make it and Amber can't. Personally, I'm okay with that. And again, this is just my opinion. But in general, trying to stick to Tuesdays as much as possible is my preference.
Andy, this is April again. One thing I did not see on this schedule. It is the, uh, Saturday, school district deliberation session, the annual school district meeting. Um, I was looking at the information in the town and it does state that the, that the school district does set the annual school district meeting. Is that something we should take up now on when that would be scheduled? So we can all put it in our calendar?
Patty, do you want to touch? I thought there was state input on that, but.
Sure. So we, this has been in the past strictly the school board meeting schedule. We haven't, I think we've always taken the same order as long as I can remember of school in town. And it's not something we would typically publish on our school board calendar.
Do we expect the school board member to attend? If so, I would advocate that it should be on our calendar if we're expecting the full board to attend. Also, April, one more thing. Um, I do know that the state, um, their reopening committee is scheduled to give guidance on June 30th on the reopening of schools. Um, and then 30 days later, um, it's planned that they'll give additional guidance. So for that reason, I think that we should talk about what a meeting schedule would look like. At least, um, I think we should include July as well.
My comment would be.
Can I make a comment, Andy?
Let me do, let me do Patty and then Jean and then Amy.
I would just want to point out that the commissioner, um, when we had our meeting last week, indicated that because of the number of results, um, on the survey, they were going to extend everything out a week. And I, while I absolutely agree that you need to meet in July, I would just be cautious of relying on the, in the information coming out when it's been said it will come out because nothing has yet. All of the guidance has been very late. So I just wouldn't want to rely on that, um, but agree that we do need to meet in July.
Jean?
Uh, my, my comment was basically, I would leave, uh, any further meeting schedule in July up to, at Patty's discretion, based on the input she gets from the Department of Education.
Uh, Amy?
Um, I thought that I heard Patty say that this schedule for the 2020, 2021, uh, ye- school year, the academic year, didn't really start until August. And so I think we have two separate things. I think the 2021 schedule, I think we've given Patty, I think anyway, you know, guidance to go forward and check it against the big master schedule that was prepared and maybe make a couple tweaks and then bring this act to us to vote on. I would like to schedule something for July. But plan to cancel it if there is no guidance that has come out. Uh, even though, you know, the pandemic has changed our social lives. Summer is a special busy time and it would be nice if we could just know which night in July we should plan for. My suggestion for that is that it be somewhere in the zone of the second or third week of July. So we're far away from the fourth and we've given ourselves that buffer for anticipating perhaps the guidance might be a little bit late.
Yeah, I would, um, I, I think having it on the calendar would be good. I, I agree with that. I, the 23rd, I believe, is graduation. Um, I would not want to do it the Tuesday of that week as I'm sure everybody will be overwhelmed with lots of other stuff. So whatever the prior. That would be. And I heard like half of that.
Just July 7th because that's the first Tuesday. Why 20th is the last?
Anybody else have feelings on the July meeting? I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much open for anything other than the 21st.
I think either the 14th, which would give us, you know, hopefully the guidance would be out or the 28th. The 28th seems awful late to me.
Um, can I just chime in? The 14th and 28th, we have, um, planning and we have some very big projects coming in on planning. So that's the only reason why I suggested the seventh.
I won't be, um, available the week of the 13th.
I, I, I'd be willing to go with the seventh, but aside from any other urgent business, that meeting be only to address moving forward in the fall, nothing else.
I like that.
I second Jean.
I made a motion?
Yeah.
If we want to add one, I think I'll need a motion, probably.
Can I just suggest that, um, if on June 2nd, we're already having a little bit of trouble finding a date that works in July, that we just push at it a little bit harder to find a backup date. I think it's highly likely that we're not going to have the guidance we need on July 7th. And I don't want to find that out, you know, on July 6th and then be trying to find another date that works in July for all of us. When, based on this conversation, we already know that that's going to be difficult.
Um. Wednesday? Does a Wednesday work for anyone?
Pretty open.
Any day of the week, you know, let's not do Friday night.
Yeah.
Why? Those are.
Patty said you're off the week of the 13th?
Yes.
And graduation is the following week. So do we want to, do we want to plan for the seventh with a rescheduled date of the 29th? Would that work?
Yes.
We do have a scheduled date of Tuesday, August 4th. The 29th and the 4th are awful close to each other. So.
I, I mean, I'm taking any July meeting that we have as, you know, it'll be scheduled. But I think if, I think we're all kind of under the understanding that we don't have any pertinent guidance from, from this. We can cancel or.
Andy, can I just add something? I'm not entirely sure that we would be waiting for the guidance from the Department of Ed to bring things to your, um, consideration. I think that we're going to be doing a lot of planning, um, starting in the next week or so. And that it would be great to give you some feedback on things that we've been thinking about, talking about, considering. You know, so that we can at least have a preliminary discussion. I think that it would be a mistake to wait, to meet and to assume that the Department of Ed was going to give us, they'll give us guidance, but they're not going to tell us what to do. We, we're going to have to make those decisions for ourselves.
And pushing the limit starts on seven, six. So we probably will already know a lot of the guidance because we're going to be opening up for that session. Is that correct?
We have the guidance already that we can open to small groups like that, um, with the proper distancing, but the, the guidance is more about what would happen when you bring students back. And, you know, I, I frankly think we're talking about three options, which is pretty much what everyone is considering around. You know, either we're back, full session, we're remote, or there's a hybrid. Um, And that, I don't know that the guidance is going to be that specific from the task force. We certainly need to consider it, but I think we also need to do our own planning ahead of time.
So can I make a motion for July 7th, which is a Tuesday?
Absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jean. Any other discussion before we move the question? All right, we've got a motion to add a school board meeting for Tuesday, July the 7th on a roll call vote.
What, when I initially proposed, well, okay, never mind. We had discussion. Never mind. Take it back.
All right. So to add a meeting for the 7th on a roll call vote, Amy?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear Anne. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that Sandy hears them all. Thank you. Jean?
Yes.
And Andy's a yes. So July 7th. Sorry, Jean, you cut out. I didn't hear that.
I was making a joke.
Okay.
Usually bad.
Other discussion before we move on?
This is, this is April. I just have question about, you know, I'm not sure where we're, are we thinking about approving this? Are we asking to come to, for the superintendent to go back and come back to us? Because I do have concerns about meeting particularly on, during winter recess and also on the presidential election day.
Yep, and expressed similar concerns and Patty's going to take it and bring it back to us next time around.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You got it. All right, with that, we will move on to agenda item 3F. MOU, the Temple Sports Staff Association, Patty?
Sure. So the attorney Piel and I discussed with the paraprofessional association, the ending of their work year. We have a proposed agreement for your consideration that members of the associations' last day would be on Friday, June 5th. They would be available for work assignments if the school district needed them on, on a voluntary basis. And there's clarification that this would be temporary because of the COVID pandemic and it would not be intended to establish any past practice or precedent between the parties. So we're bringing that to you for your consideration.
All right. Amy, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Andy, this is April.
Thank you, Patty.
And while in general, I, I do support coming to the table with our paras, I am very concerned about the last clause in item number two that states that, that the time paid will be inclusive of hours engaged to wait for work assignments. That language is totally different than the current contracts that state that they will be paid for hours worked. And I have, I have concerns about staff who may be waiting for assignments for a long period of times and we're paying them to wait. That is really the only issue that I see with, that I have with this memorandum of understanding. I'm very uncomfortable with that clause.
Could I speak to that?
Sure.
It, it goes to like an on-call status where there is compensation for people being available to work. So these people, while they may not have a direct assignment at that point in time, have to be available to engage in education, whatever it might be. So they are being controlled at that point in time by the school district, by their supervisors to be available at whatever, at whatever time to do whatever task.
Thanks. I, I would add that I, I believe, and this is personal opinion, I believe that our administrators and the supervisors of those employees are budget-conscious people and that they would not abuse any such language in a way that would cost the district any more money than absolutely possible. Or absolutely necessary, I guess. Any other discussion before we move the question?
Andy, this is Amy. I had a couple of comments. I, I just wanted to note that this is an extremely small amount of time that we're talking about and therefore very low sort of line items that this would result in. And secondarily, I think it's just very fair, you know, but for their employment with the district, they wouldn't be needing to, you know, have internet service and be somewhere where they could check their email to see what they might be called upon to do. So it's different than performing active work, but it is a requirement of the job. And so I'm fully supportive of the language as written.
Others?
This is April again, again, just in response to an on-call type thing. My experience with on-call has been not necessarily being paid an hourly rate, but being paid a stipend. And then once you're called to do the job, that's when the hourly rate kicks in. That's much different than paying an hourly rate for someone to wait for an assignment.
Andy, can I speak to this? It might just, I'll just put out there when, how this conversation started. So the, the representative from the state of New Hampshire had cited a labor law and the issue, I think he and attorney Piel discussed, was that it would be our responsibility or the immediate supervisor's responsibility to make sure that they have their schedule. So we're talking about people that are scheduled to work and that there was concern that if we left an hour of, you know, a gap in their schedule throughout the day, that we would expect them to subtract an hour of work and that would be on us, not on them. So it's not intended to be for people who aren't working. It's intended to be sure that we have given them a schedule and that they're working because we asked them to work. And then if there's a gap in between somewhere, that that was on us, not on them.
Thank you for the clarification. Other discussion?
April, again, clarification question. So the intent of this is not that someone may be waiting all day for work, but not engaged in work.
That is not the intent.
Follow-up question. What safeguards are in place to assure that that does not happen? That someone's not waiting for the majority of the day for work?
Employees are scheduled. The soup, immediate supervisors in the schools are responsible for giving them a schedule. Beyond that, I'm not, I'm not sure how we would do anything else other than make sure they had a full schedule.
I would add that I will echo a common refrain of Amy, that these types of details, in my opinion, cross the line into management rather than governance. We instruct our superintendent to bargain on our behalf. She's done so. This is the contract that is presented. We have a motion to accept. I would like to move the question. On a roll call vote to accept the MOU as written. Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
No, simply because of the clause.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. All right. So that brings us to agenda item number four, for A, Board Reports. I'm not sure how many of these we will have, but let's find out. SAU Board, or SAU Exec Board, I believe that's Anne. Sorry, I don't have in my head yet who's doing everything. So if I mess it up, please forgive me.
Yeah, that is Anne. We haven't had any meetings. They have been canceled. Our last meeting was April 8th.
Thank you. Budget Committee. There's no meetings to report on, but I did receive an email from Jerry Flurry, who was kind of, I don't want to say he was acting as chair, but Karen Yettin was the chair of the Municipal Budget Committee. She's now a selectman, so she can't be that anymore. And there was communication that needed to be made, so Jerry made that in his role as vice chair. So it was basically just a heads up that he's going to be asking the Municipal Budget Committee to meet, obviously quite a bit earlier than it normally would. I think he mentioned the month of June. I haven't heard any follow-up. I haven't heard if a date has been proposed or accepted or anything like that. But I did receive that communication from Jerry. I did respond and thank him for keeping me in the loop and to let him know that I would definitely be interested in attending if a meeting were scheduled.
Andy, this is Anne. There is a date. It's a June at 6:30 and it is going to be remote.
Thank you. I did not get notified of that. It said June 11th, correct?
Correct. Yes. Jordan is working and Jerry is both working on computer skills on how Patty whips this out.
Thank you very much. Pace Report, is that still April or is that Jean?
I think that's both of us, but yeah, nothing yet.
Hill Renovation Committee Report, that's me. I'm not sure that anything's been done on that. I do see Kevin on here. Kevin, if that's you, if you would like to unmute yourself and contribute to the conversation, I would invite you to do so. All right. Moving on. I, I will actually, before we move on, I will, I will reach out to Kevin and see if they have met and see if they plan to meet. Obviously, everything's up in the air right now, but I will, I will at least make contact with Kevin and see what the committee status is and report back next time around.
Andy, we have none.
Thank you, Sandy. I forgot you were on that. So Principals Reports, I think they're all still with us. Let's start with Paul this time.
Thanks, Andy. So today wrapped up the 1920 school year with remote learning. And, you know, for the next eight to 10 days, we're asking staff and students to engage in remediation, recovery, reassessment. Up to this point, you know, I think students have given their very best efforts and staff have really gone above and beyond to meet the needs of our students and parents and community members to assist in the support of students throughout remote learning. So, you know, to get to the finish line, I think it's a pretty remarkable feat. And given all the circumstances and everything being in flux, I couldn't be prouder of our school community and the way that we handle things. So, you know, that's a wrap, I guess we could say.
Does anybody have questions for Paul?
Sandy's waving her hand.
Okay.
Not anymore.
Oh, we're at time delay.
Does anybody have questions for Paul?
Andy, this is April. I just wanted to ask about an update on the reopening of the building for students so that they can get their personal belongings.
Yeah, great question. Thank you, April. So staff actually have been admitted to the building this week to close up their classrooms, prepare for summer closure and to gather student belongings. And then starting Monday, June 8th through Monday, June 50th, we will open the building to students on a very organized level by grade level and alphabetically so that we don't have 750 students descending on the campus at one time. So it's very structured and organized, but they will have full access to lockers, classrooms, classroom belongings that will be organized in the cafeteria and bagged and labeled with their names so that they can retrieve their own personal effects as well as to return school-owned property such as textbooks, homebooks and things of that nature. So we have a very streamlined and organized process in, in, in the works right now for both staff and students. And I'm happy to say that so far, things are going as we have planned and organized. So we're, we're going good in that regard.
Other questions?
Andy, this, I, I have a question. It was in our draft to read for this evening's. So I'm not sure if it's at this point or later. But my question is for the graduation 2020 proposal for students entering the armed services, why is that not done at the Fisher Cat with the regular graduation?
I think there was, oh, let Paul answer that, sorry.
I had put that under informational. That was one of my informational items.
Yeah, so we do, we do have a plan in place, Anne, and that's something that's going to be proposed to the board shortly. And we certainly recognize that those seniors being deployed need to be celebrated in advance of the rest of the graduating class. And we do have plans in place to that effect. So that is not lost on us and certainly very important to us as those students are going off to defend our country. We want to make sure we recognize them properly, well in advance of the anticipated graduation.
Oh, thank you. So this is in addition to?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? All right. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
I assume, well, I don't know if this will be your last meeting or not, but just in case, thank you for everything that you've done for our schools and we appreciate all the time that you've given us.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. Yeah, I'll stick around for next week's meeting.
All right. Good to hear.
Blood and for punishment.
Jean, not me. I was going to say, but I thought I'd be professional about it. Yep, I am.
Thanks again. Mr. Marston?
Hi, everybody. We also, not unlike Paul, we ended the year today also, and I think there was quite a lot of relief for a lot of people. Not unlike what Paul said, the staff has been outstanding, the students have been outstanding. And we've got actually an incredible amount accomplished compared to what actually I thought when we started this. So I'm very impressed and very proud of how our, how the whole community got around this. But I have gotten a lot of feedback is, is to, boy, are we glad we're in the, at the finish line. We just have to run through the finish line now and wrap things up. So we're also, you, Paula talked about getting personal items to students. We are in the process. I was in today with some staff members and we've run a whole schedule for staff to come in. We're actually physically emptying each locker, putting them in, in a bag, tying them up, labeling them, organizing by homeroom and grade level. And next week, I will be spending some time curbside, so parents will come up, grab their bag full of stuff and drop off any books and/or equipment that the school owns and hopefully continue to drive through. So we are not allowing anybody in the building except for, you know, a small skeleton crew of staff. We, we created a schedule so that there's really two staff members per wing to get their rooms done and to pack the lockers. We also did something last week that was something that really actually touched me quite a lot was we delivered lawn signs. And quite honest to you, it was a little bit of work to get it organized, but we spent four hours and did 50 miles through Pembroke. And we dropped off all the eighth graders lawn sign, lawn sign. And I, I have to really compliment pals because they really supported us through that process. They, they helped us with the money for it. So no child had to purchase one. We used the fundraising they had done for the eighth grade field trip to DC, which obviously didn't happen. So that was exciting to see families out in lawn chairs waving to us as we went by. We had, we had three or four staff members on the bus and probably 10 cars and police. And we made quite a racket going around town. We also preparing for our promotion ceremony, June 11th, 6 o'clock, which at this point is coming together. It will be a drive-through curb, curbside event. We're having quite a few members of the staff will be there to cheer them on. And we'll be getting details out to the families very shortly for that. And I think that's about it for now.
Thanks, John. Any questions for Mr. Marston? Any questions for Mr. Marston?
John, I've got incredible feedback from the graduation parade you guys did. So I want to thank you and the Three Rivers staff for putting that together and making it happen and, you know, making the best of a bad situation. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. You know, there's a lot of people that helped. Dale did a great job putting that bus schedule together. And when we first saw it, I was like, oh my, really long. But I'll tell you, the staff hung in there and we had, we had a lot of fun. And quite honestly, it, it reminded, reminded me of why I do this.
Other questions for Mr. Marston?
Yeah, this is, I just want to say thanks. It was fun watching the parade.
Yeah, thank you. I saw you.
What's the, yeah, and Taylor waved to you. You didn't, Sam.
No, I didn't.
What's the date of the graduation?
It's gonna be June 11th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
I've been putting out some save the day for folks. And, you know, I did again Monday and we'll, we'll do a little more detailed one for that night, that evening, but it's the 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Yep.
Andy, this is April. Mr. Marston, one thing that you had told us in the past, which I thought was pretty awesome, is you were making yourself available to families through Zoom meetings. And I'm just curious, is that something that you've done a couple of times or that you continue to do? And, you know, how, how did you feel that that affected your families, your kids? Because I just thought it was super awesome that you were putting yourself out there and being that available to families.
Yeah, thank you, April. We, I don't know how many times I did it. It was quite a few. I did it every Friday morning at 8 o'clock for, oh boy, I don't know, quite a few times. I can't remember how many. I did not do it last Friday because I was out delivering signs. And we probably will not do it currently just because the school has ended. But I would get anywhere from two or three to a dozen parents. And I really think it gave them an opportunity just to, just to talk, just to share frustration, to give us feedback, to thank us and just really to feel a little more connected to the school. And if, you know, God forbid, we go through this again in the fall, but that is something that would continue. And actually would try to find a time. There's no time that's good for everybody. That's what I found out. So you have to just kind of grab a time and stick with it. But it was, I thought relatively successful.
Thank you for making yourself available.
Kind of along the same lines, I, I have a fourth grader who's now officially today, a fifth grader. Will be at PRS next year. And so the annual, what do you call it, John? Parents Night, Information Night also happened this week remotely, which was interesting. Went off really, really well. I think, you know, at some point, there was somewhere around 30 people there. It was fantastic to see Mr. Marston and Ms. Gagne and Ms. Brannick. And there was, I had to be eight staff members there, I would say, faculty and staff. So the school was very well represented. It was very much appreciated from a, from a parent's standpoint. I thought it was very well done and I appreciate that that's not something that had to fall by the wayside because of the current situation.
Yeah, thank you. We wanted to, we still try to reach out as much as we can, even though this is a tough spot, but we're trying to duplicate what we can in a tough situation. So it's our pleasure to do those type of things.
Any other questions for Mr. Marston?
Can I just make a note, piggybacking on that, Andy? We also have a rising fifth grader and attended the parents' night. But I can't remember if it was that morning or the day before, you know, all the days sort of bleed together nowadays. But my then-fourth-year-old and I watched the really excellent video that you and your staff produced. It was sort of like an orientation to the middle school. And that was really excellent. And in a time when my kiddo is not so excited about going to school, when that means just sitting at the desk, she came away from that really excited.
Oh, I'm glad, I'm glad that, you know, you never know how it comes off, but staff put a lot of time and thought into that. So thank you for the feedback. Thank you very much.
If there's nothing else, we'll let Mr. Marston go. And Ms. Griffith?
So today, like everyone else, was our last day. We did an all-school assembly. We had taped for the students. I was able to introduce the new principal, Ms. Gary, to the students so that they could have an opportunity to meet her. They will also see her in our parade on Friday that will go through Pembroke as we say goodbye. I think that alleviated some stress for students. Also, just wanted the elementary level, a little unlike the middle and high school, just a huge shout out to parents because so many parents sat next to their students while working remotely this spring and juggled not only potentially multiple students, but their jobs and had some type of amazing grace that they pulled it all off. So kudos to our parents at the elementary level. Certainly kudos to our students and the teachers did a bang-up job. We will at Hill review over the next few days how remote learning went. Surveys were given out and we will take into account all the things that were said during, collect the data for the, from that. And we'll talk about how we, the things that we were really successful on and the things that we need to work on. But overall, a really strong finish at the end.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Ms. Griffith?
Just to say that we're all really looking forward to the parade. My arm muscles are getting ready.
Thank you, Suzie.
And I'm assuming we'll see you next time around too, but just in case, thank you also for everything that you've given to our schools. Anything else before we, Suzie? All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Item 4B. It says 2021 budget on our agenda, but we'll also talk briefly about the 1920 budget. Ann had specific questions around that, so maybe we'll tackle that one first. Somebody, Patty, can you? Quick, somebody's got a lot of background noise. Thank you. Ann, did you wanna, you had some concerns or questions with the 1920 budget?
Yeah, my question was if we have a list of the, the savings that we have concerning with the school closing and the building not being used. I didn't know if Amber had numbers on those yet. As a fuel savings from the bus company, even savings all the way down to the heat, sewer, electric.
Amber, do we have a picture of that sort of thing yet?
I have not outlined that for this. I was not aware you were gonna need that this evening, so I don't have an outline for that. I have where we're at, at this point, but I do not have it broken out into those subsections.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andy, this is April. Could we possibly figure out big picture where we're at?
Yeah, Amber, do you want to comment on, on the general state of the budget for the current time?
Sure. We are around where I stated before, we have, we fluctuate a little bit here and there. We have approximately a little over $500,000. That does not take into consideration any warrant articles that were voted in during the March meeting, which is, I think, was like 82,500 or so. So it's, it's changing, but really has been very minimal. With that said, we are still waiting for some invoices for May and we will have invoices that come in in June.
So basically no big changes from the last time we talked?
No.
Are there questions about the current budget? Okay, we'll move on to the 2021 budget. I'm not sure if there were, Patty or Amber had anything in particular they wanted to discuss on there. I, I think I actually asked to have that one added just in case anybody had any questions that we can discuss. Are there specific questions for the 2021 budget at this point? All right, I guess I, oh, I heard somebody. Oh, Amy, we can't, oh, it's because we muted the phones, Patty. I think you're good now, Amy.
How's that?
You got it.
Okay. So I was just going to see if others are thinking the same way that I'm thinking, which is in terms of the chicken and the egg, I think we need to determine what manner of education will be delivered in the fall. You know, of those three options Patty mentioned, full remote, full back to normal, or something in between. And then that would allow us to have a more informed discussion about the 2021 budget. So I just wanted to share my thinking and ask if others are in line with that sequencing of determinations.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And sadly, as Patty kind of alluded to, most of the deadlines that have been set for information along those lines have not been met, which is understandable. But I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, when we're gonna have anything concrete to make decisions based off of and, and then, like you said, subsequently have budget discussions based on that. So, yeah, I, sadly, I think we're still at a lot of hurry up and wait right now.
I agree with that totally. The one concern that I have is that if we get to go ahead to send the kids back to school and then this rears its ugly head again in October and November and, you know, it's, there's way too much uncertainty for us to lock into any one model at this point in time. That's why, I guess I don't have a definitive opinion on how we should proceed, but the uncertainties that are in front of us are, are great. And even if we get direction from the state, that could all go out the window in a month or two.
Agreed. I guess for my part, I would thank Amber for being here with us tonight. You know, I would, I would ask that, you know, you keep attending the meetings that you can in case we do have questions. I think, you know, I know that there's a lot of things that are still up in the air, a lot of things that, that we won't know for quite a while yet. You know, some idea of, of major items that we may have saved on or might be able to save on would be interesting. And I think that's kind of what Ann was going for. If we can get an idea of, you know, just some general things like did the fact that we didn't have to run buses all year, did that, did that save us money or did it not because of contracts? I don't know. So, you know, if you, if you think of things that might be of interest to us along those lines, certainly bring them, we'd be happy to hear them. Are there other discussion items around the 2020, 2021? It's hard to say. Budget before we
Could I just clarify that for Amber's purposes, I'm just concerned that she's entering year end and has many, many hours ahead of her for all of our districts. So I'm wondering if it's really helpful at budget season when people email questions ahead of time? So would that be a possibility? So if there are no questions for Amber, then I can free up some of her time and could make sure you get the answers.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Is everybody on board with that? We can ask Amber to attend if there's a genuine need for her to attend, but otherwise we can submit. If you guys want to submit questions to me, I'll forward them to Patty and she can make sure that Amber gets them and we get answers.
Yeah.
Yes, and if we do have to have her attend, let's make sure her attendance is early in the meeting.
Thank you.
Is Amber or Patty gonna attend the June 11th budget meeting?
Sorry, I didn't hear. I think you, you asked if Patty or Amber are gonna attend the MBC meeting on June 11th, is that right?
Yes.
Patty or Amber, have you guys received an invitation to that?
No, I didn't know anything about it. I'm not sure what the purpose of us attending would be unless you have specific questions for us. If it's June 11th, I think that's the Three Rivers Promotion.
Yeah, it is. I'm bummed I was planning to go to that.
Yeah, I need to be at Three Rivers.
I think that's pretty much, isn't that usually like a wrap-up? And get things set for the upcoming year?
I think that this, I think the purpose, and this is an email that I got three or four weeks ago, so I'm going off memory here, don't hold me to it. I think that they want to discuss next year. I think they want to discuss, you know, what kind of surplus we might be looking at, which I think there's not gonna be a huge change between now and then. I have enough information to give them on that topic. But I think this is more like, let's really wrap our heads around what impact this might have on the taxpayers and start. I don't think it's gonna be a simple, you know, wrap-up of the previous season like this meeting would normally be.
Correct. That's gonna be in August. And Andy is correct. Jerry wants the, as the Vice Chair of Budget right now, Jerry wants to have the residents know ahead of time as much as they can on the increase that they're gonna have to save for December.
If it's amenable, Andy, or you want to go to the June 11th Three Rivers Promotion Day? If I had proper documentation, I'd be willing to go.
Okay, I can chat with you offline about that. I might take you up on that. I want to, I'm pretty sure it will be, but I want to verify that it'll be in some way recorded so that I can go back and watch it. And if it will be, then I may defer that to you, but we can talk about that offline.
Can I just, I would just caution us to be careful about having discussions at the MBC level before there have been any board discussions or decisions made. You know, I think listening at that meeting and then bringing back any questions and concerns to the board might be appropriate, but I don't know that we can really have discussion that hasn't happened here first.
Right. Understood.
And that's okay. I'd be willing to do that also, so.
Thanks, Jean. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Policy Review.
Wait, unless, unless my, my, my kid's having a baby that day.
Fair. Policy Review, Policy BEDG. About minutes, this is our first look at this. Patty, do you want to say to kick us off?
Yes, I would, please. So typically, we try, if we have enough notice, to redline the policies for you. And Kathy has done that. So she takes the School Board Association sample policy and takes your current policy and tries to redline the changes. So you can see with all the red that there are quite a few differences in your current policy and the School Board Association's policy. That's in the drive for you to take a look at. The request was made to have BEDG and BEDG-R. And when Kathy did some research, that policy was withdrawn, amended and recoded as EHR. So if the board is interested, we could have both EH and EHR on the next agenda because those are the policy, the one policy replaced the other. And you do not currently have either of those. So if the board wishes, we will add those.
Okay, and I'll throw in a little note here before we discuss for Amy and Ann, just in case you're not familiar. I think this is our first actual policy review that's been on here. I can't remember if that's right. But by and large, how policy review generally works is if there are policy changes or new policies created or whatever. the New Hampshire School Board Association provides sample policies that they believe comply with all of the RSAs that would be applicable to that policy. They provide those as a service to us. And then we typically review that sample policy, and we would either accept it as written, or we may modify it to fit our district a little bit better, depending on the feeling of the board. And then we vote to accept one way or another. And that's kind of how we build our policy file, our policy structure. Anything, you know, we can go back and look at policies that we already have and amend those at any time as well. But you'll see things on here. First reading means this is the first time that we've taken a look at it with this board. I've seen things get up to the third reading or the fourth reading before we take action and get something done on them. It is one more thing that we need to read during the week when we can. Sometimes they're put in there with fairly short notice. We rarely take action on something on the first reading. So anyway, that's a brief overview of how policy review usually works. So I would certainly support what Patty said if these have been replaced by new policy letters. If we could get a copy of both of those in the drive for review for next time around, that would be helpful for me.
Andy, this is April. I would just like to bring to the attention, in prepping for this meeting, I took time to do that last night. This document was not available until 10:19 this morning. For those who have other commitments during the day, it does not leave this board or board members an opportunity to review it. I would like to ask if something's on the agenda, that we please get that posted in advance. It just doesn't seem like enough time for us to come to the table and be productive if it's being posted the morning of a meeting. So I would like to request, if we know it's going to be discussed, to please get it in the folder at least, you know, when the agenda's posted, so that we have the opportunity to prepare for the meeting. A policy is something that can happen like that. I understand there's other things, but that is my request.
Thank you. Just to make sure I don't miss something, April, is that why you raised your hand in the chat?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm sure you didn't have a second one.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. I would also like to add that this policy was revised in November 2019. So it is timely that we take a look at it.
Other comments on the minutes policy? Go ahead.
Patty, can we just have a copy of the untracked change version? So in other words, the current version put out by the School Board Association. Thank you. And then...
Sure.
I... Thank you. I share Andy's sentiments. I'm all for getting those other two policies in front of us.
So we typically, on the first reading, we would just put the policy on the agenda in your... in the current fashion that it's written. So Kathy got the redline done a little bit. I would consider it early, so we wouldn't discuss it or make any changes for today. So I'm sorry if the impression was, hey, we gave this to you and it needs to be looked at on the same day. The second reading is when we typically start talking about changes, and I wanted you to have the redline version so you could kind of compare your current policy with the sample. So we will absolutely also add the current policy in there for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. That's good, too. I seem to recall there's some other policy somewhere that requires the school board to not enact a policy until after it's had at least three readings.
It can be acted on the second, I think, but I believe there's something that states only if it's an emergency on the first reading. Yeah.
Thanks. Other comments on the policy review? All right, hearing none. Agenda Item Number Six, informational items. Patty's got a few things for us.
So the enrollment tracking sheet has been updated by Amber, and I suggested today that she should laminate it because 18 months ago, she hit the exact number of students that we have today, which I've never seen happen. It's ironic, but we're exactly where we predicted we... or Amber predicted we would be 18 months ago, so that's great. We have put the program assurances for the grants in the drive for you. It is an enormous document. We have to sign those every year. Last year or the year before, maybe, excuse me, the board... The Department of Ed started requiring that the School Board Chair also either sign or initial those. So they're in there for your reading pleasure, but they are enormous, and certainly you probably just want to do a skim of those. We... I had a note that from Kathy, the minutes said, I think that you were adding this meeting, and she wanted to clarify that it was replacing the June 9th meeting. I think we already fixed that, that we have another meeting in two weeks. And then the final informational item that you probably want either Paul or Dan to speak to you about is that it was brought to our attention that some of our graduates were going to be deploying soon and would not have the ability to attend a ceremony. So PA kicked it into high gear, wanting to honor those graduates and put something together. So there's a proposal so that you could take a look. And if you'd like, either Paul or Dan could give you more information about that.
I would definitely like to hear more about it. Paul or Dan, whoever would like to speak to it, I suppose.
Sure. So I have to give all the credit to Barbara Michaud, who has been behind the scenes, planning not only our traditional graduation ceremony, although unconventional in nature. When we learned that we had a handful of students, senior members of the class of 2020 who were deploying in the next few weeks, we wanted to make sure that we properly recognized them and celebrated them in advance of their departure. So we have put together a proposal for an event in the evening next week where we would convene in the courtyard out in front of the school, have the benches that traditionally adorn the main lobby, which are fairly long. They could probably seat each family in the bench area and separate those benches with appropriate social distancing guidelines and conduct a brief 30 to 45-minute ceremony where, you know, we honor those, you know, seniors and recognize their commitment to our country and defense of our country, and also confer diplomas to them. Hopefully, we will be able to provide them with caps and gowns, or they have the option of dressing in their military outfits for that ceremony. So that is kind of our preliminary thought on that, and I will let Dan speak to anything that I have not covered yet.
I mean, that really covers it. It's a small group, and we want to observe social distancing while still honoring their commitment to our country before they train.
On a personal note, I think it's amazing. Thank you to Barbara. This is one of those things that could have slipped through the cracks, and that would have been a shame, but probably understandable. And the fact that you guys were able to pull something together to honor these wonderful kids is fantastic. I'm so happy that this is happening.
Andy, this is Anne. I have a question. Have you reached out to the veterans? Because I know there's quite a few that would like to attend this for them.
Yeah, good question, Anne. We have not yet reached out to any veterans or community members just because we're trying to preserve some level of social distancing and minimization of the people in attendance. But I think, given the nature of these seniors and their deployment, I think it would be, you know, all the more memorable for them and certainly important to those veterans to, if they can, take part in the ceremony. So I will mention this to Barbara and see if we can't reach out to our local veteran establishments to see if we can get some of our community members who are veterans of the armed forces to attend and possibly take part in ceremonies. So thank you.
I do have quite a few veterans in town that I'm sure that would like to participate. So should I have them just give you a call or email to see how they could do it socially distancing?
Yeah, absolutely. Feel free to have them get in touch with me. It's P as in Paul Familari@SAU53.org. Or also B as in Barbara Michaud, M-I-C-H-A-U-D, at 53.org. Either one of us, or even Dan D Morris@SAU53.org. Any of the three of us can help coordinate those efforts to get those folks in touch with the ceremony as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding the proposal for military graduation? You're not looking for any action on this tonight, right, Patty? Any other comments? Questions? All right, Patty, did you have any other informational items?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
All right, then we will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our second public comment section of the evening. We'll limit that to 15 minutes. Patty, if you want to go ahead and unmute the phone, folks. If you are on your computer and you would like to be recognized for public comment, go ahead and drop something in the chat while we see if there's anybody on the phone that wants to chime in. It looks like the phone lines are open. So if you're called in on your phone, if you would like to contribute to public comment, just state your name, and I'll recognize you. Okay, hearing none. Patty, if you want to mute everybody except Amy? Should we make Amy sing to make sure that we don't mute her?
What you don't know is that I actually love to sing. You'd be so excited.
All right. I think you got them. I don't see anything in the chat either, but I'll give it another minute or so and see if anybody wants to drop us a line. Radio host right now. First time, long time.
That kind of sound like it, too.
I've got a face for radio. All right. I don't see anything, so we will move on. Patty, do we have need for non-public?
We would only need to enter non-public session if there were specific questions or comments that you would like. I'll be making four nominations of teaching staff this evening, so if you wanted to have conversation about those folks, we could go in under small letter B, which is hiring.
I guess the easiest way is to accept a motion to go into non-public session, and we can just vote. And if people feel the need to go in, then they will vote no.
Wait, that's your sister.
All right, I couldn't click the unmute button in time. Just wanted to say hi, and Amy, you're doing a great job, as is everyone else.
Thank you all.
This is April. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. That was Jean and April, Sandy. So there is a motion to go into non-public session with respect to New Hampshire RSA 91-8 colon 3, Roman numeral 2, small letter V, to discuss hiring, if necessary, on a roll call vote. Jean? Yes?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a no. Motion carries, so we will enter non-public session at 9:18 PM. We need to pause for... We are on Agenda Item Number Nine, Appointments, Resignations, and Retirements.
Could I do them all in one group? Would that be okay?
I think that would be okay. I'm seeing a nod from Amy. Can't see anybody else?
Then I would nominate Kate Bertensini, Kevin Arnold, David Tong, and Amanda Heisler.
And they get a motion.
Motion to accept?
I'll second.
All right. On a roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Great.
To the end of our agenda. Thank you to those on the phone that stuck around and listened to the whole thing. We like public participation. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Amy seconds.
Thank you. On a roll call vote, Amy? Sorry, I didn't get it.
Yes.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes.
You guys just messing with me now?
Yes, but I have a question. Was... Did we determine the next meeting?
I think we had discussed earlier, two weeks from today, on the... What is that, the 14th, Patty?
16th.
16th. Sorry, I can't add.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Anne. I didn't get your yes or no.
Yes.
Thank you. And April?
This is April, but I have a question as well. My question is, seeing Amy struggle with these challenges with the technology, have our new board members received their district-issued electronic devices? I don't know if that may help, and that's why I'm asking, but I am a yes for adjourning the meeting.
Thank you. I know that I was copying an email and reached out to Patty. Patty's working on that as we speak, I think. Is that right, Patty?
The chargers just came in, and they're ready for pickup as of tomorrow.
Thank you.
And I'm a yes at 9:36 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Three hours.
Sadly, that's a new record for us.
Absolutely. I had to note it.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Good job, team.
Good night.